Turned it off?
Yeah.
Clear that?
Wait a minute, it might be unplugged. Says power, so they move. There it is.
At this time, would everyone stand? We'll have Commissioner Rusty Orrick to lead the prayer and the pledge.
Thank you, dear Lord, for this good day and blessings in our life, dear Father. Much over to the seed, dear heavenly Father, much over our family and children of Jesus. Much over the seed, Lord. Bless our country, dear heavenly Father, the seed and our soldiers that's crossed waters, dear heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, be with us tonight. Help us make the decisions that best suits our county, dear heavenly Father. Thank you for everything you do in our life. Heavenly Father, be with us, dear heavenly Father. Thank you for all that you do. Most of all, thank you for the plan of salvation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll take the roll.
David Atkins?
Wait a minute, we're voting? Everybody that's present, mark present, and then pressure confirm to button? Okay, we have thirteen members present. Terry Singley and Wendell Bailey are absent. Okay, you have minutes of the commission meeting, January 22nd, 2013. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Orrick, executed by J.L. Davis. Anybody have any questions or corrections? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes and two absent. Minutes are approved. Next, we'll have the approval of the notary public applications. We have the renewals first. They are Deborah Nelson Lawson, Sharon Muse, Melody Compton, Kathy Sutherland, Anita Ann Miller, H.W. Conrad, Carol Jo. Nelson, Chuck Hensley, Megan E. Lindsey, Gregory D. Smith, Lindsey Russell, and Kenneth Starek Jr.
Motion to approve the renewals.
Have a motion by Orrick, executed by Sue Nance, to approve the notary renewals. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. We have thirteen yes and two absent. Now we get to call out how they vote. Yeah, for the notary renewals, call out the vote.
David Atkins?
If they all vote yes.
They all voted yes, except for...
Maybe each one had an...
Okay, David Atkins, yes. Marie Airs, yes. Wendell Bailey, absent. Charles Gault Baird, yes. Johnny Bruce, yes. J.L. Davis, yes. Alvin Evans, yes. Beverly Hall, yes. Tom Hatmaker, yes. Sue Nance, yes. Rusty Orrick, yes. Steve Rutherford, yes. Terry Singley, absent. Bob Walden, yes. And Bobby White, yes.
Okay, notary renewals are approved. Now we have three new applicants. Lisa Dawn Singletary. Alicia Morgan Franklin and Bertha Hatmaker.
Motion to approve the new applicants, Chair.
Motion by Orrick, executed by Sue Nance, to approve the new applicants. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent. New applicants are approved. Now, give us the vote. Madam Clerk?
David Atkins, yes. Marie Airs, yes. Charles Baird, yes. Johnny Bruce, yes. J.L. Davis, yes. Alvin Evans, yes. Beverly Hall, yes. Tom Hatmaker, yes. Sue Nance, yes. Rusty Orrick, yes. Steve Rutherford, yes. Bob Walden, yes. Bobby White, yes.
Okay, new applicants are approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee reports and minutes. You have, probably have, the ones that were in your packet last week and then the ones that are in the packet that was handed out tonight.
Motion to approve the committee reports and minutes.
Second by Sue Nance. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Committee reports and minutes are approved. Next, we have the budget amendments and funding resolutions.
I make a motion, Chair. I make a motion, we approve all of them except for single out 2-7 and 2-8 and do them say.
So, do we have to state specific numbers?
2-7 and 2-8.
They were never approved.
2-1 through 2-6 and 2-9 through...
Fifteen.
2-1 through 2-6 and 2-9 through 2-15 is what the motion is to approve at this moment. We have a motion. I need a second. David Atkins, second the motion. Anybody have questions or discussion? 2-1 through 2-6 and 2-9 through 2-15. Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Nine yes, four no, and two absent. Those budget amendments are approved. Okay, we have 2-7 and 2-8.
I'm sitting here talking to David.
I make a motion to approve 2-7, which is related to the school funds or the solar panels.
Now, here's a second. Second by Johnny Bruce. Any question, any discussion? Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. The other night at the school board meeting, it don't work. I seen several of the other commissioners there, and I asked Jeff if he'd seen the proposal on the other proposal that was supposed to have come in, or somebody said to come in. I haven't seen it. But there was supposed to have been another proposal that come in that was also a purchase, because I think we were doing a purchase comparison to a lease comparison when we talked about the two companies involved. The other gentleman, I can't remember his name. Kemp. He came in at $9,500 per site less. Have you seen that?
Have I?
Yeah. Have you seen it?
I have not.
Okay. I was under the impression that he might have sent the proposal to you, but I think he got disgusted as well. But $9,500 less per site over twelve sites was... What does say what was? $114,000 that the school system could have saved. If we just took proposals, we didn't know where we stayed, you know, stood. The TCA code prevents us from bidding it out, but it doesn't say we can't take proposals. So, if...
We asked him, I asked him to send us whatever information he wanted to, and I would give it out. He said he would, but I never got it.
That's what I was told that he sent. I mean, this is not written in stone, that's what we took care of tonight if we wanted to follow up on it. It's just whatever you guys decide want to do. I just, I know that was the information that was supposed to have been sent, was $9,500 less per site. That's $114,000, if my math's correct, per school, or for all the school sites, and then if we had, what'd you say, five county? County buildings that we're looking at? That would be a savings of $47,500.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
I wasn't done yet.
Okay.
I'm not telling you what I told you before and what I told the school board the other We, as elected officials, are responsible for spending the taxpayers' dollars as efficiently as we can. It ain't got nothing to do with who owns this business or that business. It's like I told the school board the other night, Mike Mallico's a good friend of mine. I've got as much respect for him as I do some of my uncles. But I got elected to sit up here and make good choices for the people of this county, and I think we should have, or Jeff should have took some proposals on this. That's just my two cents.
Anybody else have a question? Rusty?
The school board approved unanimously the other night to go with this 2-7 resolution. They're funding that site, and they've looked at the proposals, I'm sure. They talked about it the other night to indefinite timeframe about what they had done and what they'd looked at. But what they had was a purchase versus a lease. But that's what they decided. It's their freight, they're paying on this one, on this resolution.
They still don't make it right. They're still spending our dollars.
They're spending the dollars that's generated out of that revenue from that stream. Am I right, Jeff?
You are correct.
They're not spending actual dollars that we have right now. It's coming out of that revenue stream. That's their business. We have to float the bonds, I know that, and we decide whether we float them or we don't float them. But it's still, they're paying the freight. That's what I'm looking at on the school side.
Marie?
I was at the meeting as well, and Paul referred to the twelve sites, but the nine sites have already been done. So, you really can't compare the total twelve times the $9,500 or whatever.
I was just doing that.
But I'm a...
Should have been a quote.
The school board had all that information in front of them the other night and chose to go forward with it, and I've heard a lot of comments, well, why don't you just, if we got that much money to spend, why didn't we just pay roads? Well, this, I'm probably opening a can of worms here, but that's okay. These solar panels, if the information is 50% accurate as far as the numbers, they're going to pay for themselves and provide a decrease in expenses. And I think David alluded to that the other night. As a county body, we don't have a lot of access to revenue, and even though this is not technically revenue, it's a decrease in expense, the cash flow at the bottom of the pot is the same. So, with respect to the school system, this is what they chose, and I don't, again, I don't know that we have, I know we can second guess it, but they made it with information available to them. Now, the file for the county, that may be a different story. But they're not, it's not just what we're floating the bonds. We're floating the bonds, and they will pay for themselves and have a positive cash flow, overpaying for themselves. And I think that's just getting misconstrued here and there.
A lot of people thinks it's coming out of tax dollars right now. It's not.
Right.
It's coming out of the flow.
And it's not like not putting the solar panels out, that we could cut our cost any other way. It's not one or the other. It's one or not at all. Anyway, that's just the school board.
Bob Walden?
When does the decrease in expenses begin?
First year.
First year. I have trouble seeing it, Jeff, because we borrowed the money, right? And we're paying the note, correct? Off of the money that's generated from the electric bill. Electric bill doesn't change. The money that would be, that would go towards reducing the cost of electricity, or at least reducing the monthly bill, or the amount paid to the utility, is actually going to the note. Is that right? The electric bill doesn't...
Did you receive your email that's sent out after the school board meeting on late last Tuesday night, early busy morning?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to look at that one, Jeff.
All right. In this two-page document, I went back, and the first one I presented to you guys was an aggregated version across all the sites, both school and county site. So, I went back and separated it into its component pieces, so that the school system would be separate from the county. And on the second page of this instrument, about two-thirds down the page, three-quarters down the page, there's a section entitled inflows, over/under inflows compared to outflows. And it's aggregated, and then by the schools, and then by the county sites. And this is after the comparison of inflows to debt service requirements and maintenance costs. In year number one, for the school sites only, there would be $19,099.59 produced exits. That would be allocated a month to their school sites, well, and that would produce $1,591.63 of positive cash flow, which...
Okay, all right, I got it. That was, there was a number we'd used, $1,200, $1,450, and now $1,591?
The consolidated with all of them together is $1,425. The schools average over fifteen years is $1,505.70, and the county has a separate item, it's $1,322.20.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying, we borrowed the money, we're paying the note. Part of that money that we're getting back from the solar panel production of electricity is paid in the note. The $1,400 roughly per site...
Per school, yeah. It's a school...
Okay. Goes to the school, not to reduction of utility costs.
And then they reduce the appropriations for electricity that allows them to pay for the note, the bond payment, and they make a contribution to each end of each school of, an average of fifteen years, $1,500.
The $1,500 is the excess from each site at the end of the year.
That's correct.
It's not used to reduce the cost of the utility bill.
That, no, that's the excess of other producing utility.
We're still having the utility bill. I'm missing, I'm obviously missing something.
Okay, let's do it like this. Let's go, and the reason we did it originally was income to total expenses as opposed to a reduction in expenses. Okay? Let's imagine it's all income in the form of money in hand that you're going to receive from the rebates and sale of the power. All right? Revenue from that is going to be greater than the debt service cost and the maintenance cost, and still produce a net profit of $1,500 per school site times twelve. Got it now?
Still looks the same.
Uh, this paper, you got $100 comes in, you're going to spend $90 to do debt, and $5 to do maintenance, and have $5 of profit.
And the utility bill is in the $90?
The utility bill is in the $90.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, the utility bill is part of it.
You through, Bob?
Uh, yeah.
Marie?
I'm good. I was just going to say, I think what Bob's trying to figure out is the actual, the way the transactions want to take place.
Man, it's going.
And the utility bill. Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, don't...
Okay, I'll go with you. I'm good there.
You got it square?
Well, I think, I think I do, and I don't think it's any, it's none any different than when I started, was that the total amount produced by those solar panels covers the cost and the cost of the utility bill.
Okay, hang on, I don't want to set it to the head. You remember we did the training thing last year?
Yes, sir.
And the very first thing that they said to us when we got ready to review the program was, the commitment has to be from the entity locally, that they're going to continue to budget the same amount for utility costs that they would have otherwise, plus any type of inflationary index each and every year.
Yes.
We're figuring it 3%.
Yes.
This works exactly the same way.
Thank you. That's, that's exactly what I thought. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Tom?
So, the solar panels at the high school are going to produce more than the schools are going to use?
No.
They'll produce more than what the bill's going to do?
No.
That's what I, that was the answer I was expecting.
No, they will not produce more. That would mean that you would have over 100% production for your total bill.
Correct.
This only will address about 8% of the total electricity consumed.
As a matter of fact, Tom, the, if I could, it's required that the school, that each site use at least 25% more than what's produced. So, if it's a 50 kilowatt, they got to use 5 kilowatts, so they don't get any, they don't get the rebate.
So, this is only going to address like 8% of their consumption?
I thought you told them that the utility bill was going to be in that 90%. That it would pay the...
The reduction of the utility bill is in the 90%.
I thought you stated that it was going to pay the utility.
No.
I knew what, that's why I asked.
I wish to God that that were true, we wouldn't have a savings of a few dollars. You'd have a $4 million savings or something.
Correct.
Anybody else have a question? Ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirm to button. Those opposed, vote no.
We need to state a conflict. We need to state a conflict.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Eight yes, five no, and two absent. Charles Baird, Beverly Hall, Tom Hatmaker, Sue Nance, and Bob Walden voting no. The motion passes.
We need to state a conflict on that.
That would be a good idea.
I have a conflict.
Steve Rutherford has conflict. Bob Walden wishes to state a conflict.
Bob Walden voting no. What's the conflict?
Alvin Evans.
There's a conflict. Doesn't matter how I vote, still a conflict.
Here Walden. David Atkins. Johnny Bruce. Okay, now we're on 2-8. Where's your chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say, sir, that we're prior to making a motion. There's been a lot of speculation and conjecture passed around and thrown back and forth as it relates to these solar panels, and frankly, that's exactly what it is. The numbers that we have, while they look great, and we believe, and I believe, that we would actually incur that amount of money over that amount of time, it's also still somewhat unproven as far as working, sir, because this is new to all of us. So, in consideration of this amendment, I studied about it all week, and this is just my opinion, the panel can do with it what it will, but I'm going to make a motion accordingly. While I believe in these systems, like I said earlier, and I believe that it's going to produce extra revenue and/or a savings, if you will, on our utility bills for the county portion of it. I'm also a little bit taken back by going another million dollars in debt for the taxpayer. While if you take away the solar panel project, it also takes away the revenue. Everybody understands that. It's not like we're spending money that we already have. When the, when the solar panel project goes away, the revenue will also go away. But if we do take on the solar panel project, it does incur debt for the taxpayers additionally. I think we're in the absolute best position that we can possibly be in right now as commissioners, because while I supported the school system, and I believe in what they've done, we could, I'd make a motion tonight to table this for six months. Let the data compile on the school system's side, and if it proves to be a viable revenue source, we can look at it in six months' time after the budget, hopefully, after we've compiled six months' worth of data, and then make a decision as to whether or not it can be a profitable venture for the county commission to go into. Because as commissioners, we're in a peculiar situation. We've got very limited revenue streams. While I want to save all of the money that I can for the taxpayers, I also would like to bring in as much money as I can without adversely affecting their pocket. So, that'd be my motion, if everybody understands it. I'd like to make a motion to table this project for the county portion for six months, let the data compile up, and six months we'll look at it. If it's going to be a, something that would bring in extra revenue for the county, I think by that time we'll have enough data to realize whether it would or not.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to table budget resolution 2-8. Jeff, I've got a question. In 2-8, is there any, are those other three schools included in? They're already, they're in the...
2-7.
Okay.
2-7.
It just includes the five county sites?
Yeah, and what I'm going to say is, in terms of to table 2-8, is also...
tabling solar system agreement on the four county sites, and solar system agreement on the one environmental site, because those are contingent upon having appropriation authority, so there was no reason to vote on those as a separate amount. The motion would include tabling two eight, and solar panel agreements on the four county sites, and the solar panel agreement on the one environmental site. That should be part of the motion.
So, the motion is to table two dash eight, budget resolution, and the four county sites and the one environmental site, the agreements. Does everybody understand what we're doing?
They're going to.
Correct.
Compile the data over the six-month period to see if the school department's staying around, and then bring it back to the table.
I mean, I think that's the absolute best decision to make, because there's a lot of unknowns here. Uh, we can, we can look at it in six months and say.
We should have the motion in six months.
And say, no, this thing's really working, I mean, it really is working, and it's another revenue stream for the county, and I mean, we may, at that time, be breaking Mr. Matt Coats' arm to come down here and put solar panels on there, playing with our guy, including our hands, you know, walking around generating electricity. But at the same time, it could very well go both ways, and we could be saying, I don't think it will, but it's the same, this is the same route to take.
We'll know in six months.
We'll know in six months.
Anybody else got a question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to tell you all this, too, and I told Mike this a few minutes ago, I've got a customer that I'll be working for tomorrow in Clinton, and when I went down last week to price the job, the whole side of the barn had solar panels on it. And the lady told me, because I got to ask her about it, she said that she didn't get a bill this month, and she called and asked about her bill, and she got a credit. She still wanted her bill so she'd know how much she was getting credited, but she told me she'd be lucky if she got electric bill the rest of this month, or, I mean, the rest of this year. So, I'm, again, I'm not against the solar panels, I think there's a process that we're supposed to go through, and I don't think it was going through completely. And that, that's the questions I've been asking all along about the process, not the solar panels. So, I think the solar panels are going to work, but I agree with you, too, I think we can take six months and see what the data says.
In six months, we'll probably have egg on our face because we can do it. But on the safe side, on the, on the county side, let's go for a major decision. We have to kind of, if they're paying the freight, we kind of have to back them.
Six months will be in the summer.
Six months will know it. Six months you'll know what they're bringing in, and I'm, I'm sure that we'll be wishing we grabbed anything in there.
Johnny Bruce?
Jeff, is this one person in the way as far as, you know, waiting six months? I know what the cost of the profit is.
Really? If you're going to impair, if you try to do bonds for the profits, if you're going to impair about fifty thousand dollars possibly, however I afford it, but on the county five sites, it's roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those five sites. And if that's bottom of the road, you'd probably be better off to try to take, see what you can get on the capital plan, on the twelve, the capital plan, you know, avoid the bond issue costs altogether, and see if you can get a comparable interest rate for the twelve you know compared to the bond. I don't know whether that's possible or not, we don't know, none knows what the interest rates are going to do, um, associated with that. But we'll have to cross that bridge and get there, if that's what you want to vote here and do. I, I understand the conservative approach of seeing the, the production, all I can say to that is, all of the production figures that we're looking at, as Mr. Thomas talked about, when we had the meeting last week, they're based upon thirty-year average for our latitude, longitude, this region, um, those are then decreed, and I think he said eighty-five percent of that figure. So, I don't think that there's much chance that what's going to happen in the next six months is going to be different than what we have this thirty-year debt. But that at least will let you see it, touch it, and feel it. And it wouldn't be some data that's compiled with somebody you didn't know in a land far far away, it would be from the utility bill, the LUV, so you can see exactly the credits they're receiving, any from the schools, and any from the commission.
David Adkins?
Johnny?
Yeah, sir.
It's going to cost us some money to wait. I mean, it's going to cost us, you know, and, for instance, if the rebate goes from nine cents to six cents, and that's at the time, and we don't know.
I don't think it changes except from January.
Okay, okay, good.
But you may not be able to get an approved application six months from now, because that's what they ran into on the first round. We got in at the very end, and it didn't last very long, it only allowed so many applicants to be approved. Um, but I, I can assure you that in six months, you'll be in that round, and you may face that January one, twenty fourteen, being in the six cents environment, who knows?
In that case, we will lose, based on the fifty KWH six, and I just took that in Africa, that's a figure, the lower six. The difference between the nine cents and the six cents is, uh, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars. That's over a twenty-year period. That, that, that means, you know, I mean, we're going to lose some money, plus if we have to sell the paper, the issues of a bond, that's another fifty, sixty thousand bucks. But it's, it's the safe thing to do, it's the responsible thing to do as a commissioner, because like I said, I want to make it as easy on the taxpayer as possible, so if there's any chance at all that we can get some extra revenue from wherever, I mean, we'd be selling rock if we could, out of Madison Square. Um, if there's any chance we can get any revenue, I certainly want to do that, but at the same time, we're in a perfect position to be able to do what Jeff said, to look at it, touch it, and feel it, and see it for ourselves, and we have to make a decision and commit the taxpayers of Campbell County to another million or some dollars in debt.
I also applied for a Clean Tennessee Energy Grant, half a million dollars to help on this project, so if you indeed wait six months, within that window may close.
Well, we know that, Mayor.
Because if they're going to flow, flow the half a million dollars to us, and they, and we've applied for it, and we get it, then we can bring that back to the table at that time. I would rather.
That would almost pay for the transition, right?
And that's through T-Dat?
It's, uh, yes.
Part of the T-Dat?
Yes.
Is there a match that gets them?
Yes.
Kill match?
It's a half a million dollars, but we're already doing, we're already spending the money, still, we're just getting a half a million dollars. We're getting a half a million dollars more than.
Can you let us know when that comes around, and you announce it?
How they think it will be, how they think it will be in July.
I mean, that gives us a few months of data to be stored up on that case.
The systems and the schools, when are they operating?
That's what I was going to ask.
Are they?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, for the first, that's a March, April, May, June, July, that'd give us four months of data, if in fact we got that grant, we could maybe have enough data to, to move forward. We certainly don't want to lose the grant.
I'll put on this, half a million.
Okay, everybody know where we are. We're voting to table motion, uh, to table budget resolution two dash eight, and the purchasing agreements, I guess, that go with the four county buildings and the one environmental building. All those in favor of the tabling motion, vote aye, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You said six months, right? We really need to look at this at four months.
Well, I'm going to say, if it's not specified in there at time, then it will, if, when the mayor hears about that grant.
We're just voting to table.
I thought you said six months.
I did, and it's. We're not setting a timeframe.
But you can actually pull anything from the table, am I right, Joe?
That's correct. Uh, and you don't, you wouldn't actually have to pull it from the table, you could just make it a regular agenda item for consideration as, as a future being.
Eight votes and pull it back off the table, yeah. We could pull it back up to the end of the meeting before we close out, if we saw a simple fee.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone wish to change your vote?
Show us the vote, ma'am. We have thirteen yes, two absent. The tabling motion prevails. Okay, next is reports.
No, sir.
You got, what else you got?
We got those, uh, things for the volunteer fire departments and the non-profit agency criteria to be able to receive contributions immediately in your, have your contents underneath the word approved budget, uh, and other funding regulations. And they're in your packet, and you, if you remember, at the first funding meeting, there were two things added to the real nine for the non-profit organization, and, thank you to come and figure in this. Give your hand out here.
Ten was if there was any lawsuit coming in.
Number nine, uh, in this, the non-profit, you know, is in the supplement, they pick your hand out, it's number nine on the front of the list, page nine at the bottom of this thing, and it now has, um, eleven criteria, um, supposed to the rich, including two thousand one added at our meeting last Monday. I'm going to set a motion on this one, and then a motion on the ones for the volunteer fire departments, which is in your packet.
So, we need a motion on the guidelines for.
Non-profit.
Agency contributions from the county.
I have a motion to approve.
Have a motion, Maria is seconded. Anybody have any questions, unclear, clear? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. Okay, next, we need a motion to approve the guidelines for our volunteer fire departments to receive contributions from the county.
Motion approved.
Motion by Oryk, seconded by Bruce, for the volunteer fire departments to receive contributions from the county. Anybody have any questions? Everybody clear? Okay, we're ready to vote. Those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Miss Nance? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes and two absent. Are we ready to move on now?
Yes, sir.
Rusty?
We got all that stuff in schools, just solar panels.
All the stuff on the solar panels, is that covered, all the resolutions and stuff, the paperwork and all?
Yeah, two, 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 table two eight, and agreements on the four county sites, and the agreements on the one environmental.
Are we done with the budget stuff? Before we get done, I've got one question and maybe a motion.
Okay, we are?
Um, here a couple of months back, the, the utilities, uh, is doing, is, is laid out a line work up at College Hill, and they're building that line, replacing the two-inch with a six-inch main. And right now's the time we need to capture two hydrants up there. It's not my district, it's in the Sacagawea, and I think I run it past Bobby, and Bobby spoke with, with Kenny Baird and, and with Eddie Troxel. Since it's a dry line, it's a new line going in, it's dry, and we normally pay four thousand dollars per hydrant. What I found out today is it's going to be about fifteen hundred dollars just to buy the equipment. They're going to tee two of them in, so we need to, I don't know if we need to do something tonight or not, Jeff, but we need, they're going to want to buy those hydrants pretty soon before it gets wet. If it gets wet, then we're going to pay the four thousand.
Do you need to send me in a quote?
Okay. So, we have funds to cover at three thousand dollars. I mean, I'm not trying to jump ahead, I'm just know that.
Bobby was supposed to give us something.
Bobby was talking to one of the public this evening, I didn't want to interrupt him, but that's something that, you know, when it's dry, it's a lot better price, and Bobby's done laid the footwork on it, I mean, he done attacked it hard, and they told me this evening that they have plans for to put two hydrants in, no engineering costs, it's already been done, so, yet it's, that's good, because it don't happen very often.
Have Ken or Cheryl send me a quote.
I'll do it. I can't even interrupt.
Okay. Now we're ready to approve the reports from county officials and other departments. Motion by Sue Nance, seconded by Rusty Oryk, to approve the reports from county officials and other departments. Anybody have a question or call in? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes and two absent. Motion is approved. Okay, under other matters, we have the open house memo that's already happened, Jack from Middle School, was that concerning the.
March first.
The, uh, community garden project. Remind everybody, on March the first, breakfast at eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. It's a fundraiser for the community gardens project that, uh, teams a senior person with a student to help mentor them and teach them responsibility and community awareness and so forth. Uh, Neil Denton from WBIR and the UT Extension Service is going to be the speaker. It's a fundraising breakfast, asking for a ten-dollar donation, ten-dollar donation.
It's on Thursday.
Everybody's invited. March the first is Friday.
Friday.
Next Friday.
Free chicken.
You don't get a free chicken. It's a fundraiser.
You think you know how that is?
Yeah.
Let us do it that day.
Okay, in your packet on page twenty-nine is the OSHA Plan Resolution. Just paste other matters. This is something that has to be updated every five years.
It's sitting on page twenty-nine there?
Yeah, it's in the section.
Oh, I see.
Just next page.
I make a motion to approve it, it's the same.
We got a motion to approve the OSHA Plan Resolution, uh, here, second, second by David Adkins. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent, motion is approved. Next is the appointments to the Animal Control Advisory Committee, and I'll recognize Johnny Bruce.
The animal control committee met this afternoon, and we asked every volunteer for us, and voted on tonight, uh, Campbell County, A Ward, to be listed as brewery, to Fisher Simpson, uh, Brangelico Matsumizki, to Jacksonville, Dewey Madison, and to capable Johnny Jones.
Okay.
Make that motion, so.
We have a motion, seconded by David Adkins to. We have a motion seconded by David Atkins to... Bruce made the motion yes, and to put Elizabeth Asbury and Patricia Simpson on as at-large members, and from the city of Jellico, Mike Swinski, city of Jacksboro, Dewey Madison, the city of Carroll, Johnny Jones. Any question, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. You also have a list of, uh, requested surplus equipment from EMS.
Is that in the book there?
No, I emailed it to you all.
That's where I see it.
Before last, sometime last week.
Got the blue screen, that's...
Everybody got it or not?
I'm gonna look. Send it out to lab.
Okay, here it is.
Starts with a 2006 Ford E-350, uh, box to be remounted or traded, 2003 Ford E-450, box to be remounted or traded, 2002 Ford E-350, single rear wheel axle, not remountable, and a green utility vehicle, which is 2004 Ford E-350, single rear wheel axle, not remountable, and 2005 Crown Vic. I need a motion to declare these vehicles surplus.
I'll make a motion to declare it surplus, I've got questions to get us there.
Motion to have second, Bob Walden.
Yes, sir, Mr. Oryx.
Either one of you, none of the parts can be used on anything else we've got, or they are restripped?
They're already stripped.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, they're missing fenders, doors, motors, transmissions.
Crown Vic, there's nothing that, Crown Vic, there's nothing that the sheriff's department, nobody can use out of the Crown Vic.
Well, we actually got the car from the sheriff's department, they picked it first, we picked it last. Uh, it don't need a home truck.
You guys gonna auction, or you guys gonna scrap it?
Well, I'm sorry.
Are you guys auction or scrap it?
Well, we're not quite sure yet. We'd probably get a better price to scrap it versus auction it, because like I said, there's nothing left of the trucks. Two of the trucks are going for the...
Remounts?
Yeah, the two best trucks are going for trade-ins. Uh, so the other ones are, when we got from the recycling center that we gave to the recycling center that was hit by the semi, the recycling center gave it back to us, I could say, so we picked the parts off it. Uh, I mean...
Now, when this, when these vehicles are sold for salvage, Joe, what happens to the titles and everything? Um, they destroyed also, or they accounted for?
It, it goes with the salvage company.
So, there's documentation that's went to the salvage yard and been paid for?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's documentation, and then the title is just...
Okay.
Any other question? Tom Hatmaker.
Jay, are they, you saying the trucks that you're gonna take the bodies off of are being traded in on the two new trucks?
Uh, the whole truck's gonna go, because, that's why we're the, because if we take the boxes off, they told us if we cut the wires, it's gonna reduce the trade-in value by $3,000. So we're just gonna surplus the trucks. One truck's missing the transmission, it's, and the other one is missing a motor, front end, so when they take the trucks to North Carolina, we don't wanna go back and get them. Because all it will be is a part of a chassis missing a motor, part of a chassis missing transmission that have to be towed back. One truck's not even got a front end on it, it won't have the doors when it leaves, it'll just be a shell. So we were trying to get a surplus, so it's their baby, 'cause it'll cost us more to transport it back than what we'll get at sale. So, we decided to be a cost-saving to the county, just to let them have it and let them deal with it.
So you're gonna keep the doors, the hood, radiator?
Yeah, we're picking up, we're getting used. And, and when it leaves here, it'll look bad, but it ain't coming back.
Okay. We ready to vote? All those in favor of surpleasing these vehicles, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. Uh, the next one is, was the, uh, resolutions to support legislation for cemetery preservation. I got an email, uh, late Friday, actually got it this morning, uh, that that legislation, they got a senate sponsor but did not get a house sponsor. So this is gonna be delayed until next year, so we don't have to take any action on this Okay, then the next is the resolution to cost share with TDOT and the city of Carroll on the right-of-way acquisition of the X-141 exit industrial access road. I handed that resolution out tonight. We don't actually have to, you can either send the check now, or you can tell them the way that you're planning on paying for your part, whatever your part, they've, uh, estimated that it's gonna cost $372,700 to acquire right-of-way for this redoing of this road. State pays half, local government pays half. We're caught, we're splitting the local part with the city of Carroll, it comes to $93,175 a piece. And this resolution just shows the way, once it's determined what the, uh, right-of-way cost actually is, this shows how the county proposes to pay their part. The preliminary work that we've done, we don't think that it's gonna cost near this to, there's only one place that they're proposing to change the direction of the road, and all of that property will come from the city of Carroll's industrial park. The road we have right-of-way from, starts out at 54 feet wide up to 70 feet wide, once you get in the park. The roadway and shoulders is gonna be 38 feet wide. We've already talked to, uh, the Carroll-Jaxboro Utilities, it's already in the process of extending their taps so that they will be out of the way of the road. Uh, city of LaFollette Utilities has already been up and looked at the power pole that need to have their guide wires either removed or moved across the road, they've agreed to do that, so, we're asking you to pass this resolution just to show them the way for the way. Fund it if it comes about.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Johnny Bruce, seconded by Marie Ayers. Tom Hatmaker.
William, is this just for the purchase of, of the property, or is this include the asphalt?
It, it's just about, yeah, just the right-of-way purchase. So we don't think that we're gonna have to buy it. So we, they're straightening it out where they go into the industrial park.
My question, is any of the cost for the road itself, building the road?
No.
Okay.
No, the state's doing it, right around the middle over 4 million dollars. They're gonna raise the road in places, it's gonna raise it 48 inches. They put in grain, to where it doesn't crumble like it has in the past.
Okay, everybody ready to vote? Those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. David.
Before you move on to the commissioners, uh, Senator Cochran, as we reminded you back in May of last year, uh, the commission authorized a direct view to executive documents affiliated with acquiring the property beside the airport.
Right.
And he brought this tonight to, 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 to closing.
Right. The, uh, state appraisers, that we're talking about, the, uh, cleaner property, it's on the south side of the airport.
You having issues over here?
I am. Get me to work.
The, uh, 7.2 acres, gentlemen, 7.2 acres. We're having technical difficulties, we straightened out momentarily, but soon. 7.2 acres that we need to require for the airport, because of the, uh, trees and stuff that are growing on this property. You have to, uh, keep a certain area in each side of the property, uh, of the airport, cleared, vegetation and so forth, this FAA regulation. The, uh, appraisers appraised the property at $40,350, is that correct, Joe? Yeah. And the state paid the percent, or 90, 95, 90% of that. What's the county's, you know what the county's portion of that is? Uh, I know it's 5,000.
5%.
So it's 95% that the...
State does 90.
State does 5, does 5. We are ready to close on that this Thursday.
I think that's correct. Mr. Chairman, the, the resolution that passed back last May, uh, had given you, uh, the authority, uh, the county mayor has authorized to direct and execute any documents, taking action, and further to the resolution to purchase the property, subject to final approval of the county commission, or to be denied, to get the final approval of the county commission, allowing you to complete this closing at, at this price and to, uh, execute any documents which may be necessary to carry out.
Okay, I need a motion to complete the transaction and issue any documents necessary to complete the transaction. A motion by Bobby White, seconded by Charles Baird.
Is this the bind you want for?
That's the next one. To complete the, uh, transaction of the property purchase. What? Yeah. Excuse me. Yeah. Why? I see. Say my name.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all those in favor, give me back eight more questions.
We're covered on the month.
We are. Uh, all those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Hold up. Have you got a little small confusion?
It's okay, it's okay. But you might believe that you believe that I'm bad, so.
Your assistant will come in.
Chairman, especially if you have a high probability.
We need a motion to suspend the rules first.
I'm moving.
And motion by David Atkins, seconded by Johnny Bruce.
You gonna let this council vote, the votes that you have that are gonna reveal, council?
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Voice, vote on the...
Well, we can, they wanna change their vote.
That's incorrect.
Okay. No, we got, we're not, we're trying to get our procedure straight. We got a, uh, a motion to suspend the rules. We have already voted, if you wish to change your vote, to suspend the rules, this is what we're voting on. David Atkins. Johnny Bruce. Okay, everybody good with what we're doing, except for Bob Walden, he's shaking his head over there.
He's sideways in it today.
Okay, show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Okay, now, we have a motion by Bobby White, seconded by Charles Baird, to approve the county mayor to complete the transaction for the airport property and execute any documents necessary to make that happen. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Go vote, David. Mr. Baird? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. Okay, next we have a resolution to release the reversionary clause in industrial property out in the, uh, I guess it's for John McGee Industrial Park. We discussed it in workshop, it's property that David Hicks presently owns, he's selling it to the people that bought his company.
Edgar Havel.
Make a motion that we approve it. This property has changed hands at no good time.
That building was built on it, it's...
Yeah.
It has no play in it, wouldn't get you a second, I'm sorry.
Also, a motion by Oryx, seconded by Bob Walden.
It does not interfere with the cemetery there.
No, cemetery, John's property, it's already been sold, has nothing to do with the cemetery Anybody have, Tom Hatmaker?
Since the reversionary clause was missed, uh, do we get a three-month work out of our attorney for that?
Actually, it's a, it's an issue here that I, I don't personally consider to be an issue, because there was a building built on it.
Right.
With any threat.
Right.
So I, I really don't know what the reason why the bank is asking for it, but apparently they are, so.
They're actually...
Just the formality.
That's no...
Okay. Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion is approved. Okay. Now moving to commissioners. Mr. Evans? Okay, not tonight. Uh, Tom Hatmaker?
I got it deferred to Joe.
Did you get that resolution?
Personnel policy resolution.
We're, we're not ready for that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bob Walden, adopt our request for proposals for professional services as part of the county policy.
I would like to refer that to our budget finance committee for next time we need. On the request for proposals, so we can have a good, good discussion, and on the other one at our regular workshop.
Okay. So, anybody have any announcements or anything else? Any announcements? Are you gonna announce something soon?
Yes, I'm going on.
Anything else? I hear a motion is... Motion by Susan Nance, seconded by Johnny Bruce. We are adjourned, thank you all.